Really, the takeaway from the work that's being done now is this is an extraordinary collaboration of dozens on dozens of interested stakeholder groups who are coming together with a common purpose. It's really an inspiring showing of humanity to not only be able to provide for a greater quality of life for our people, but to be strong stewards of our land so that our future for us and generations to come is incredibly bright.
Very pressing issue. It's bearing down on us. Fire season is approaching, and I am really interested in preventing my home and other homes in my community from being impacted by wildfires specifically from being burnt down. That's my main reason for being involved.
Quite a collaboration of folks. We're here looking for practical solutions to help us unravel some of the issues surrounding wildfires today here in the state of Oregon. And my focus really is on planning for large wildfire events in advance of their occurrence. That way, when they do occur, we can respond more appropriately to those situations.
Well, I just think it's grand if all of the people all over the state have come together today to be concerned about water. It just warms my heart because I know that they really will leave here today feeling more impressed about the water because I have told them that we're all born in water. We cannot live without it. It's our job to take care and stop the garbage in the rivers and streams and oceans because there's life in that water. It's our job to keep it clean for them because we cannot live on this planet without the animal kingdom. I was in Ohio at the Ohio River with Dr. Emoto, the Japanese scientist who had proven water could heal. He and I stood on the riverbank blessing the Ohio River that they had us come to do. And I prayed that God has still kept the river good for them over there. We were taught from Berlin that prayer works. You too will remember your prayers because they work. It has nothing to do with religion or church.
Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So, do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities, and the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways, keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
It's the October 6th.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi there, I'm Patrick. Alrighty, welcome again, and thank you for joining in on the pledge of allegiance. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's what we're going to stand on today. Look for amendment slash approval of the agenda, gentlemen. Okay, Anthony?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. I'd like to amend item H on the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'd like to add that to say appoint members to the safety committee. Additional to Clerk Renee Colon volunteering, Juvenile Director Wendy Ling has also offered her services for that committee, so just update that.
Members instead of member, okay.
Yep. And then I would like to add an action item that should be pretty quick, but we just need to discuss the appointment of members to the Port Orford Cemetery Maintenance District.
Okay, so that would be in discussion, action EF?
Yep.
PO? Or is that in consent agenda?
I was going to put it in consent agenda, but I thought maybe you could just explain it real quick to the public what we're doing, so.
PO Cemetery Board, okay.
And then I forgot to put in my ARS for the executive session, but I'd like to add ORS 1926602H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed.
Okay.
Those are my things.
Commissioner Boyce? Oh, Chris?
Yeah, council and I spoke about this morning. We're going to remove E7E from action items and move it to executive session.
Okay.
There's some security issues there that we want to keep, you know, that just need to be discussed in executive session and not in open session.
Right.
And Chair, if I could just add, that's going to be ORS 1926602F to consider information or records that are exempt from public inspection, and that's what I'd be adding to executive session as item B.
All right. So there's two items in executive section?
That's correct, sure.
All right. Commissioner Cork?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 7C, Economic Development Director Madison's name should have been added to that, and I can speak to that later on when we address this as an action item. She did the lion's share of the work and was very helpful on that. And then my other two were, coincidentally, thank you Council Pope for recognizing 6H and correcting that and adding an additional person. And the 7E item was also on my list, I believe, for the same reasons it was identified by Commissioner Pash and my discussion with Council Pope yesterday afternoon.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, approved the amendment as the agenda as amended. Hello.
Alrighty.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Public comments, three minutes per person. We'll start with Mr. Gordon Clay, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Gordon.
For the record, my name is Gordon Clay from Brookings, Oregon. This is my last COVID report to the commissioners. It is clear to me that some County, Curry County officials have little or no interest in the safety of our citizens, especially our most vulnerable children and seniors, and that my reports fall on deaf ears. Since my last report on September 15th, Curry County has had 101 new cases, and since the commissioners voted unanimously on a resolution to ignore OHA and state mandates on masks and vaccinations unless voted on by two or more of the commissioners, Curry County has had six deaths, which represent 33% of the deaths since this pandemic started. I want the veterans to know that your VSO has ignored two requests to back up his statements that OHA had on their website that three times as many vaccinated people have died versus unvaccinated. Why he won't stand behind his statements, I don't know. But veterans, no, don't believe him. If you choose to risk the remainder of your years on this earth, that's your choice and the commissioner, as the commissioners emphasize, but I hope you get vaccinated because I don't want you to go through any more pain than you've already had serving this country. And to the commissioners that said, there is no clear science on vaccinations and types of masks people wear and how much they block. Too many variables on vaccinations. Which ones work? Which one doesn't? Which one has the side effects? Which one do you need two or one of? Europeans have been vaccinated. There are more of them in the hospital than there are people that haven't been vaccinated. Those are all direct quotes from transcripts.
Priest.
I provide you with the facts from EPA and CDC to confirm that there is plenty of information on the escaphus, whatever that word is, for the masks and vaccines. I ran a very successful Airbnb. During the summer, I was booked 28 out of 30 days. I get a request almost once a week from one of my previous people asking me when I'm going to open again. I tell them that that's what's going on here, that our citizens don't wear masks, that only 49% are fully vaccinated, a number that's gone up only 3.3% since September 1, and then our six deaths and about our six deaths, and I wouldn't want them to risk their lives, nor mine. I keep a list of them and will let them know when I feel it's safe for them to come to Curry County. But at this point, I'm closed until April of 2021, 2022. Now, if you are waiting for a sign from God, they have already given you masks and vaccines. What more do you need? By the way, October is bully prevention month. I'm out of here.
Thank you, Gordon. Nancy Sue Rose, please.
Nancy Sue Rose from Nezeca Beach. I would like to answer in relation to Gordon's comment from this week and last week. Vaccines are a choice, thank God. Mandates of masks, vaccines, et cetera, are killing people too. There's been more drug deaths, overdose deaths, there's been more suicides, et cetera, because of the mandates that have been put on Oregon people. And let's remember that the video that the BOC showed over a year ago, I wish we could watch it again. Remember that COVID is a virus similar to other coronaviruses and flus. No, it's not the flu, but it is a coronavirus, and our individual immunity is up to each of us individually. We do have control of that. And so to say that officials have no interest in safety, I disagree. There are ways to be safe individually without having mandates, and the idea that there could come a time when those of us who have chosen not to get a vaccine for whatever reason will be second-class citizens in society, and this makes me really sad. Also, children have less danger with getting COVID than getting a COVID vaccine, and this has been proven. If you want me to give you more information, I'll be happy to look that up for you. Cases are meaningless, so to say that cases have increased or cases are going down or whatever, it depends on how many people have been tested. We know the PCR tests don't tell if you are sick with COVID or can transmit it to anybody. The inventor of the PCR test said that. He died before COVID was ever a word or a concept, but he was saying this in relation to all viruses. He was the inventor of it. It's not what it was made for. And if those who are vaccinated, you may have to think about getting, being ready to get a booster shot every several months for the rest of your life. That's where this is going, and it's not just about coronavirus, it's about our freedoms to live life as we normally have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Barnes.
Can I wait till we get to that?
Oh, to that item, that 7C? Yes, yes, you may. Okay, thank you, folks, for your public comment. We'll go to presentations. I don't see.
Could I make a quick comment?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last person spoke, Ms. Rose. I really wasn't anticipating that approach, and so it was almost a breath of fresh air and much appreciated, and I think it's the way a lot of people are feeling and out of Gordon and I are friends. I respect him tremendously. I'm not going to go without at least a quick comment that I've been involved in this almost every day for two years now and learning what I can. I did come out with a report or a letter to the editor, and it's basically awareness of our health. It's not a, it's not an overreaction, it's just as simple that we all need to, there's ways to battle the COVID, and that's through different vitamins, that's through exercise, proper diet, and then back to the distancing, just common sense. We don't want to be complacent because we are getting some good news now, but we know that that can change overnight. So that's all I have to add, Mr. Chair, than just ways that we can personally take responsibility for our own health, and I believe that Ms. Rose just identified that pretty well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I agree. Freedom, the freedom to make your own choice. So we'll go to number five on our list, presentations. I don't see Julie Swift in here.
Brad is in here.
Brad's here for her. You are Julie today?
I am Julie today.
All right.
Unfortunately, Julie wasn't able to be here, so I'm here to present this. So as you know, the sheriff is allowed to hire his own employees and then submit his personal action form before the board, so to that end. Dane Hoover and Rachel George are two employees that have been our new hires in the sheriff's department in the corrections department, so.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Short and sweet, I love it. This next one I like too. Curry County Powered by Kuz Curry Electric CCE Broadband Update Funding. Commissioner Boyce?
Welcome, Mr. Reckonzone. Glad to have you here. You were here a year ago with Kuz Curry Electric Executive Director Bischoff, and you need to give him a quick message, by the way. We had a presentation in Port Orford Rotary a week ago about submarines, and you know, he spent how many years on a submarine and was, you know, quite dedicated to that service. I told the board three weeks ago, our last meeting, that through association of Oregon counties, there are three primary focuses, whether you're talking about American Rescue Plan funds or just the future of what our responsibilities are within the county system. And those three issues were water, housing, broadband, of all the issues we're dealing with. And boy, that got my attention, plus the meeting, the presentation that you and Director Bischoff did last August. So we're glad to have you here. I didn't intentionally not invite your competitor, Zipley Fiber, but you know, we can send them a copy of this and we'll treat them fairly, and we appreciate the work that they're doing as well. After living here for 67 years, I have to admit, I'm biased towards Kuz Curry, but I'll try and keep that separate. I know you two don't have, no, sorry. So thank you for being here today and anxious to hear your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for allowing me the time to be here as well. As has been pointed out, my name is Paul Reckonzone. I am the general manager for Beacon Broadband, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of Kuz Curry Electric Cooperative. Brent Bischoff, who serves as the general manager and CEO of Kuz Curry Electric Cooperative, is also the CEO of Beacon Broadband. I beg forgiveness for his absence today. He has, once a month, he has a week that is entirely consumed with power cooperative meetings in the state and at the national level, and this happens to be the week this month that he's consumed with those, and so he does apologize for not being able to be here today. I do want to thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly about Zipley Fiber as well. At Beacon Broadband, we're incredibly excited that Zipley Fiber is finally coming into Curry County and doing some work. When we began this project a little over a year ago, we were incredibly skeptical that that would ever happen because they are so far away from here and this is such a rural area, it does not make a lot of financial sense. Their network has been in need of significant improvements since it was Verizon's network, and then it was Frontier's network, and now Zipley has it, and finally, somebody is investing some money into it and making some improvements. I would like to point out that a key difference between Beacon Broadband and Zipley Fiber is that Beacon Broadband is committed to bringing the high-speed fiber experience where no one else will go. We are going to bring fiber broadband into Agnes and up the Chaco River and up the Windchuck River. We're going to bring fiber service, gigabit symmetrical fiber service, to every address in Curry County. And we're going to do that because this is our home. This is where we are.
And Kuz County.
And in Kuz County, that's, you know, I live up there, but none of y'all do, so. And in Kuz County, we're going to go everywhere that the Kuz Curry Electric Cooperative serves and to a number of other neighboring areas up in the Kuz County area, and so we're very excited about the opportunity to provide service in very rural communities like Powers and in very rural areas like the Sitcom Valley, where Ivan Laird, who founded the Kuz Curry Electric Cooperative 85, 87 years ago, Ivan Laird's grandson still lives in the home that Ivan Laird lived in then. And 87 years ago, Ivan Laird could not get electricity to that farm, and today, David Laird cannot get broadband there. And so we're doing what we can to continue that Laird legacy and do things that, do things that other private companies generally won't do. Our progress in the last year has been stymied by the same things that stymie everybody's progress. I would love to give you a legitimate argument as to why we're late. We're late because the supply chains are broken, we're late because getting labor into this rural area is becoming, is incredibly difficult. We're late because, just as an example, we're putting our power plant, our DC power plant into one of our hub sites this week, and the plant that we purchased, the one that we ordered, is still 50 weeks away from being delivered. Nearly a year from now, we will get the product that we ordered, and so we had to jump through some hoops and to put in a temporary plant. That's all, that's all my woes. That's, gentlemen, that's not a concern really for you. I just, I just share that because anytime I get people that can commiserate with me, I like to have it, so thank you. The good news that we have is we are already having an impact in Curry County. Beacon Broadband, a year ago, on January 1st of 2021, Beacon Broadband had one employee, that was me. On December 31st, I was a Kuz Curry employee. On January 1st, I became a Beacon Broadband employee. Since that day, Beacon Broadband has hired nine people in Curry County. We have another eight positions that we will be filling in the next six months. We're creating direct jobs right now, today. In addition to the eight people that we have hired and the 17 that we will grow to within the next six months, we have brought nearly 50 people into the county to work on this project from various vendors and suppliers that we have that are helping us. We have created a temporary warehouse here in Gold Beach where we have an indirect employee working right now to be able to provide us the supplies that we need so that we can do what we can to keep our project and the financial impact of our project as much as possible localized to this area that we live in and that we serve. And so we're very excited about the fact that Beacon Broadband has the opportunity, as we bring fiber where no one else will go, to bring the impacts of that high-speed fiber where no one else will go as well. If you pay your bill to Charter and they provide a reasonably good service, but if you pay your bill to them, that money goes somewhere. I don't even know where they pool their money. I know that Zipley is headquartered up in Everett, Washington. I know that Beacon Broadband is headquartered in Harbor, Oregon, and so we have a very local impact, and we are very proud of that very local impact. In association with that very local impact, Commissioner Boyce, thank you for pointing out that the priorities are water and housing and broadband. And I would like to contend to every, that water has a broadband component, housing has a broadband component, and of course, broadband is a broadband component. As you, as county commissioners and your staffs, consider the ways to spend the American Recovery Plan monies that you have, Beacon Broadband is here to provide you support with that. We would like to point out to you the fact that if you're going to do anything to build housing or to create more affordable housing, that affordable housing will need to have broadband connectivity, and Beacon Broadband can help provide that connectivity. Water projects oftentimes demand that you dig up roads or do other types of new construction in order to improve those water facilities. Anytime you are doing any type of water project or street project that requires that type of excavation, Beacon Broadband would like to be there to help put new conduit in at the same time you're putting in that other new infrastructure to minimize the number of times that the disruption has to happen and to maximize the value of the dollars that are spent on each of those projects. And of course, as we are building broadband, we are looking for additional funding sources to do things that no other company will do. Nobody is, I was teasing a counterpart of mine at Charter, he has a vacation home up at Agnes, and I was trying to get him to work with us to do what we call One Touch Make Ready. It's a long story, I'll just leave it at that. If you want to know more about what One Touch Make Ready is, we can talk about that another time, but I was teasing him about our efforts to get our One Touch Make Ready getting up and running, and he was, he happened to be at his Agnes cabin when we were having this conversation. And I sent him a note, and I said, can you believe that there's somebody crazy enough to want to bring fiber up to Agnes? And he said, I commend you for it. You know, we're never going to.
Right.
Now, mind you, he didn't write that down, but that was, so I will, if he ever denies that, I will concede and say, okay, maybe he didn't say that, but the truth of the matter is, is that there are places in Curry County where the broadband can't go. There are places where it just does not make financial sense. So we are constantly looking for new ways to find funding, and we would like to encourage you as the county commissioners, as you're looking at ways to spend that money, the American Recovery Plan money, that we do have projects that we would love to throw at you. I'm not here to say, please, please give us some of that money. I'm here primarily to say, any project that you want to do with that, public safety, housing, water, streets, any project that you want to do with that recovery money does have a broadband aspect. So as you determine your priorities and the projects that you want to spend that money on, we're asking that you contact us, contact Zipley as well, contact Charter, contact all of the broadband providers, and ask us what we can do to contribute to those projects that you're getting in, what it would take for us. and ask us what we can do to contribute to those projects that you're getting in, what it would take for us to be able to do that contribution. I'm perfectly happy, gentlemen, to entertain questions, if you have any for me. Or if not, I'm perfectly happy to go find out what's happening with the power plant in the Brookings Hub.
Commissioner, pass.
Just a couple of questions real quick. Is there any rough estimate on timeline to flipping the switch?
There's a rough estimate on timelines of flipping the switch, but it's only a rough estimate. And so, for all of you on the, on the video, for all of you recording this, for all of you, we are, the, the, the official answer I have to give, Commissioner, is, is we're still working through our timeline. We had a target to set up our first, our pilot test. We've done construction in, passed about a hundred and ten homes in Brookings. And we're splicing that this week and getting the power plant up and ready. We have a target of October eighteenth because of the, the power plant issues. That might get pushed to the end of October and the pilot test will be up and running. We, we pushed our construction vendor to give us a timeline for an actual delivery date for the first production service area of about eleven hundred addresses. And they have said February eighteenth at this time. We're pushing them in every way we can to make that faster. When we talk about, we had a, we had a great conversation with, uh, City Manager Fritz here in Gold Beach. And she said, "What can we do to help bring it to Gold Beach faster?" And in Gold Beach, we're looking at, right now, we're looking at probably the second quarter of 2022.
Okay. So, we're, we're looking for this, this area, the end of twenty-two, to the more rural areas?
The more rural areas, the way that we're building it right now, as we turn up any area, we turn up the, the distant fingers at the same time we turn up the core. And so, we're, we're working to make it so that we can get our distribution ring all the way up to Coos County a little bit faster, which would then change what I, that, that last statement. But right now, today, if we turn up anything in Brookings in 2022, in the second quarter, we will be turning up everything coming off of the Brookings Hub near that same timeframe.
I have one more question also. I know you've mentioned that you brought some, some other vendors here to help do some of the work. And I experienced one of those vendors a week or so ago. I, I guess he's got a little computer he told me that he follows. And it marks every telephone pole or every utility pole. Excuse me. Sorry.
Commissioner, I, I come from a telephone family. I'll be honest.
There you go.
I won't, I won't let Commissioner Herzog know this, but I still call them telephone poles.
So, anyway, all, all of a sudden, I see this truck driving through my ranch and he's literally out in a field in my ranch and he never checked with anyone. And I'm sorry, but when I whistle at you and ask you to stop and you don't stop, I was like...
Did you shoot him?
No, I didn't, but it, it was starting to...
We've, we've told them that they will get shot.
That's what I told him. I says, "You're in a rural area." And, and I said, "I've got a lot of help here that you might wanna ask to come on property." He's like, "Well, I don't necessarily do that. I just follow the red line on the telephone line, on, on the pole lines." And I'm like, "Okay, but you might wanna go back to your office and tell him you need to call some people before you do this." And he said, "We don't do that."
They do, sir. I, they have been instructed and I appreciate the feedback because the instructions that we have given them are, are threefold instructions. First, they have to have their vehicle branded with our magnetic signs saying that they are from Beacon Broadband.
He did.
So, that, that's, they have fantastic. Second, they must carry a picture ID that identifies them as a Beacon Broadband contractor as well.
He did.
And third, they must demonstrate the same respect for property that Coos Curry Electric Cooperative has, has, has established in this community, which means that they must contact landowners before they go onto their property. And so, we will remind them of that third requirement.
Yeah, well, 'cause the biggest problem for me was he had opened a gate 'cause some of the poles on my property, you gotta go in and out of gates for cattle and horses.
They have, they have very...
And he didn't close one of the gates when he left. And my wife went over and said, "Well, you forgot to close that gate." And he goes, "No, I closed it." And she says, "No, you didn't." And he said, "Yes, I did."
Thank you, Commissioner, for this feedback. There will be, there, there, there will be a, a...
I don't wanna get anyone in trouble. I just, I, I would just recommend that they call people.
You will not get any specific person in trouble. And I'm not even gonna ask you who it was that you talked to. I, I happen to know who the contractor was because of the work that you've described. We have had this, we've had this conversation with them and we will make sure that we have this conversation again. Thank you.
And, and I also wanna say, he was very respectful and very nice. He just...
Perfect.
He said, "I don't have to, I, I usually don't do this." And I said, "Well, I would appreciate it if you did."
Yes. And, and thank you. And we will remind them that we've got to respect their property owners' property.
Thanks.
Other questions?
If you don't mind, repeat for the public, the employee sequence that Broad, Beacon Broadband is gonna do. That's, those are good statistics and really nice to hear on the employment increase.
Yeah. So, our staff will consist of seventeen full-time employees making good, I mean, we pay wages that support a family. And so, we will be, we're creating seventeen direct jobs that will do that.
Those are permanent.
Those are permanent jobs. Those are not related to the construction. Most of our construction has been through vendors. And we have a staff of about fifty people that we've brought into the county. And when we talk about bringing fifty people into the county with our primary construction vendor, they have to have, they have a minimum requirement of fifteen percent local hires. So, they, they use subcontractors generally to do that. To date, our primary construction vendor, who has a team of about twenty people right now, all twenty of them are from Coos and Curry Counties. And those are not permanent jobs. Those are associated with the construction. But because they are using Trice Underground and, and a couple of other local vendors as subcontractors, those subcontractors will continue to work in the region after this project is done. In addition to those twenty jobs from the local subcontractors, we have brought thirty people in from around the country to work here full-time. And they will work here full-time for about three to five years. And that team will increase from fifty to probably three times that size during that three to five-year time period. That, that gives us the opportunity, that gives us the opportunity to pay for hotel rooms in the region, to buy food at restaurants and at grocery stores, and to otherwise vital, revitalize the economy through direct impacts. The indirect impacts of a broadband project can, the, the studies are innumerable that show how broadband brings vitality, economic, education and arts and, and arts and, arts and social sciences, vitality into a region. Because the better the broadband, the more opportunity there is for twenty-first century entrepreneurialism, the more opportunity there is for remote work, the more opportunity there is for education and for remote healthcare. In, in association with that, because Beacon Broadband is not just a broadband company, we are a member of this community. And so, we have reached out to the community college and we have, we hooked the community college up with a program out of Utah State University that certifies remote workers and remote work managers. So, that through Beacon Broadband and the community college and this program at Utah State University, we can create certified remote workers and remote work supervisors here on the south coast of Oregon to take advantage of the broadband that we deploy. So, we are a jobs program, Commissioner.
So, went down to your opening ceremony for broadband beacon in Brookings several months ago. Not sure what the connection was, but Commissioner Herzog got a free shovel. It was really nice.
Groundbreaking, yeah.
That's exactly what it is.
Still looking for a shovel? No, I'm kidding.
Yes. We, Commissioner Herzog got that in his, wearing his other hat as, as one of the Board of Director members for Beacon Broadband and, and by default for Coos Curry Electric.
I see one in...
I guess it's the other way.
I see one in Assessor Cohen's office, too. They're a really nice shovel. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
One more question. I mean, I, I see Becky here, so it popped into my mind. I'm guessing that you are coordinating with planning and all that to, you know, maybe get a list of new construction, those kind of things, so that you can, as you said earlier, maybe be able to get the infrastructure in as it happens so you don't have to continue to break up roads and, and ground to get this place.
Thank you. Our, our efforts to do so to date have been insufficient. We will start reaching out and, and making that happen a little bit more. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul. I, I'm all in on it. You know that. So, it's, it's, it's just like bringing electricity to Curry County way back in the old days. This is, like he said, you'll be able to live in Agnes and work remotely and have high-speed internet that is unsurpassable as far as the, the quality. And when you call somebody to come and work on it, it'll be from, the office is in Harbor, the old Rogue Federal Credit, Credit Union Building. If you're down there and it'll be somebody local comes, you, you won't be talking to Timbuktu and all that stuff. So, appreciate you, Paul.
Thank you very much. And you've seen our magnetic signs. We've also got our branded trucks now, so keep your eye open for our Beacon Broadband trucks.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, everyone.
And some Oregon State colors, some orange in there and green and, so, Oregon duck. Yeah, so they covered it all. All right. Thanks again for that presentation. Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the additions of six H to members. And I think that's it.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say yes.
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 Motion carries three to zero. Moving right along to discussion action items. Road Department requests for approval of a Dyer Task Order Number Twenty-Six A, Richard Christensen. Morning, Rich. That one, you had that tied on there.
Glasses and masks don't work with each other. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good day.
Yes. This task order is for eighteen thousand three hundred. This is for repair, the scouring of the bridge piles on the Don Camera Bridge on North Bank Checko River Road. Earlier, you had signed a task order for Dyer to do permitting for this, for the joint permit application process. And, and we were gonna do the project in-house. We were gonna cut a road down there through private property and install riprap. But we find out, found out through the permit process that this is also a historic tribal site. And seems where there's a confluence of two major streams or rivers are historic tribal sites. And so, knowing that, we decided to change our plan and instead contracted out. And knowing that it would take like two minutes, years to get permits because of the tribal issues and mitigation. So, what we're doing now is we're engineering it as a concrete repair where contractors can take their farms down into the river next summer during the low water, in-water work period and put in rebar and pour concrete with a crane truck, a boom truck from the top of the bridge so we won't need to worry about the tribal impact. And so, this task order is for eighteen thousand three hundred dollars for Dyer to design the project and administer the project for us and do inspection services.
So moved.
Question? Okay. Well, you wanna second it, no question, or discussion?
That'll be fine. I shall second, Mr. Chair.
It moved to second at any discussion.
If I may?
Yes.
I just wanna recognize that Roadmaster Christensen reaching out to the, the tribe there and just being aware and looking for their input and contributions. And I, I spent considerable time with the district ranger here yesterday. And we're on a project that, you know, including the tribes, the tribes including us for service, county, et cetera. So, that's just a wave of the future. And they, they have a lot to offer and that collaborative, you know, sometimes that's a way overused word, but it really has some significance here, especially in rural Oregon and for us. So, thanks for recognizing that and putting that into action. Appreciate it.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say yes.
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 Motion carries three to zero. Discussion action item B. Rich, you're still up. Roadmaster Signature Authority for MOA, Memorandum of Agreement.
Thank you. Before I go to there, I'd just like to comment what Commissioner Boyce expressed there with the tribes. And, yeah, the Road Department, we're really in tune with working with the tribes and reaching out to the tribes with memorandum of under, of agreement and also inadvertent discovery plan. So, when we're doing our day-to-day work, if we find any tribal artifacts, then we'll contact them. And so, we're built in this relationship of trust with the tribes. And we've invited the tribes to come to the, our, our works, safety tailgates at our Road Department in the future. And I also invited them to come to this meeting, but they were, they had other stuff on. They couldn't make it. But working with the tribes is really huge for us to have a good working relationship because a lot of our project involved tribal lands. And, and also too is, is when we apply for funding, if we have letters of support from the tribes because we have this good working relationship, it really raises our grant scores. And, and it's the right thing to do. And, and so, anyways, so the Road Department is totally in tune with that. And hopefully, someday the tribes will be invited here and, and they'll accept. And they could, we could talk to have, continue that conversation.
Yes, sir.
It also raises their grant scores and, and is helpful. So, there's incentive for them as well. It's just like the forty acres we have between the Elk and the Sixes up on the, what is a ridge? I'm drawing a blank. Forgive me.
Grassy knob area.
Yes. And so, we still have a chance to work with the Coquill tribe. By the way, I learned recently that, nothing against the city of Coquill or the Coquill River, but the tribe, the proper pronunciation is Coquel. So, and we got into a discussion recently about the, the north, Northern California tribes and how their, what their different pronunciations are. Anyway, interesting. Thank you again.
That'll be a hard one to remember 'cause that's a, it's been a lot of years. All right, sir. So, you, are you ready to speak on seven B now, right?
Yes. And this is the memorandum of agreement with the tribes for the Morrel Bridge project. This is a project that started two years ago, September nineteenth. And we've been working. And in that process, we did a joint permit application. We found out that this was a historic tribal site. And so, and it's taken two years to work with the tribes on this memorandum of agreement on inadvertent discovery plan, if we find any artifacts in our human remains, what the process will be and how that will be completed respectfully. And also too is mitigation. And so, we worked with Dyer, the tribes and, and State Historic Preservation Office on, what they like to see is some type of a sign or signs that talk about the local history of the tribes. So, part of this memorandum of agreement is that we will install three signs and they'll be part of that and you'll be part of that. And they'll be installed in two kiosks adjacent to three existing kiosks at Boy Scout Park. And so, they're, it did batch the same style, so it would look really nice and symmetrical. And so, what I'm looking for, the board today, is to approve me signing this memorandum of agreement with the tribes, that we will do that work, that we will be respectful and that we will follow our inadvertent discovery, inadvertent discovery plan.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Well, just a second. Rich, where is the Morrel Bridge?
The Morrel Bridge is about nine miles up Floris Creek Road.
Okay.
It's actually at the dead end of our right-of-way. Our right-of-way ends like ten feet past the bridge.
I know Dave Morrel lives up Sixes River. I remember his mom and dad, Herb. Remember Herb Morrel? Right around the highway by Crystal Creek. Anyway, okay, just was wondering...
My grandfather was born pretty close to there.
So, I'll entertain a motion to, I, I think I already got that. Chris gave a...
I haven't given a motion yet. Well, I will make the motion.
Did you have a question or...
No, sir.
So, we got a motion?
Second.
We got a second. Any other discussion on seven B? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you.
You bet. Rich, thank you. Seven C is letter in support of Oregon State University's application for EDA's Economic Development Administration program to develop a blue economy cluster in Oregon. And I don't see summer here, but I know...
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You are in on that, too. So...
Economic Development Coordinator, Mattish, and I both serve on the Board of Directors of Coos Curry Douglas Business Development. I served on the board clear back in the late eighties. They're a tremendous benefit to Curry County. There's a joint work here with all three counties to support the blue economy. And I think everybody knows that that's an ocean, an ocean program and what, what jobs can be created from that, retained from that. And it's not just offshore wind, but it's a variety of efforts to... just offshore wind, but it's a variety of efforts to use the ocean in a respectful way, an environmentally sound way, to increase employment on the Oregon coast. And so this is a letter of support, similar to what we've done recently, similar to what the other counties have offered. And I'm asking the board to approve this letter that Coordinator Madison wrote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, and David Barnes, you wanted to speak to this as a public comment?
I do, David Barnes, just private citizen on this one. Once again, this is a letter asking for, this is asking the board for support for a letter, but there's no backup information with it. From what, things that I've read about blue economy, that includes things like extraction of minerals along the rivers. And I know that that was a big issue a couple of years ago when they wanted to open and reopen nickel mines down on the Chetco. And I just, you know, like I said, there's no backup information with this, what is this proposal? This letter is in support of a proposal or in support of the EDA and a blue economy venture, but it's, I'd really like to see a lot more about what this is, what this is letter is supporting. You know, you're writing a letter of support, but you don't know what you're actually supporting other than the words "blue economy." And I just, I have great hesitancy without knowing more information about exactly what you are supporting here. And that's all I wanted to bring up, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
It's all ocean-based, of course, we'll be at the table, that's through our representation through CCD and South Coast Development Council. So it puts us in a good position. You know, anything to do with the ocean that makes rational sense from an economic development position is coming from the federal government regardless of the administration. So this gives us a seat at the table through these two nonprofit organizations. They have proven their credibility throughout the last twenty years. And so, you know, nobody in Curry County that I'm aware of supported a nickel mine. So I have no apprehension there, I think we need to be on guard. Some of the information that should have been with this, I should have included. And I'll ask Staff Jesuit to, there's a ten-page document that does identify what blue, what the blue economy is. And, you know, there's so much natural resources out there. I appreciate the word extraction, I think we have to be on guard, but it's renewable. And so it's a great future for Curry County. And I think we need to be intimately involved, aggressively involved. And so I'll make sure that that information is available.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? So I'd make a, entertain a motion to, in support of this letter, or?
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to support the letter of support for Coos-Curry Douglas on the blue economy for the coast of Oregon and as it relates to Curry County.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
I'll, okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Seven D is Curry County Emergency Spending Authorization, twenty-five-hundred-dollar limit without prior CCC Board approval, Commissioner Boyce.
Thank you again. This is pretty straightforward, you know, there's been a little bit of controversy on what should the Director of Operations, what's the County Administrator be able to spend without Board authorization. And it's come up, you know, multiple times in the last couple of years. I just think it's wise for us to be very much hands-on on every dime that goes out of our establishment and program and make sure that we are, you know, we don't want to put County Council Pope, you know, Bach Office Manager in a tough position. That's why I think twenty-five-hundred, a twenty-five-hundred-dollar limit is a much more realistic and practical approach, not the ten thousand. So if that, on an emergency basis where he doesn't have time to get to the Board, I think it's just good business and I think it makes it easier for he and his staff. Thank you Mr. Chair.
Chris?
On this, I think I'd like to recommend the board stay where we are here. This is something that has been in place since I've been in anyway, or shortly thereafter. Again, County Council has discretion and it's something that in an emergency, if we can't reach one of us or all of us to have a vote, he has discretion to do this. Of course, if, I would hope that County Council would, if he thinks this could be a problem for the county, that he would, he would be able to say, we need to get Board approval on this first. So that, it's been this way, there hasn't been a problem in the past and I'd just like to see it continue this way.
Okay, real quick.
I'm not sure if I understand, what is the limit now, or is there a limit?
Huh? It is ten thousand, I thought.
It's ten thousand, but it's with, it's not with County Council, it's with?
Right, it was with the Director of Operations.
Yeah, and which is now County Accountant, so that's, right?
Yeah, and how the contracting rules are written right now, the County Accountant still holds that ten-thousand-dollar spending authority.
Up to?
Up to, yeah.
So.
So there has been some controversy on it though, there has been some issues. So what do I need to communicate to the board? How can I help you? I'll let you speak and then I could come back, Mr. Chair.
Well, I was just gonna ask, okay?
Yeah, sorry, I was just gonna point out too, there is a difference between an emergency spending authority and then just the day-to-day. And the ten-thousand dollars with the County Count is more of a day-to-day type spending authority. Currently, there is, through the ORS's and our contracting laws, that if there is a true emergency, there really is no dollar amount. But of course, we had a situation just was a couple of weeks ago with the Roads Department where we had to get something done that was an emergency and that would be the process we would follow if there was a true emergency.
Yeah.
So if we leave it as is, then the Financial Director can spend the ten thousand without the Board knowing or having prior approval, correct?
Well, I think it has to...
That's correct, but there's some stipulations on what type of contracts that can be used for. And it's my understanding that that hasn't been, that power hasn't been exercised recently, that I know of since I've been here anyway.
Mr. Chair, I think we still need to set policy. Like I say, it's very straightforward. I don't want funds going out. If there's an emergency and you can only get hold of one Commissioner, that doesn't do any good anyway. So you gotta get, have to get at least two. So ten thousand is way too much for this little county. So I'll make a motion, if you like, Mr. Chair.
Well, before you do that, could I just?
Sure.
I think we need to do some more background on this and as far as finding out what we have right now in place. Like, and you, go ahead Anthony.
I just see, yeah, the contracting rules, as far as I can tell, and I had both Rabia and Brenda look into it, haven't been updated or changed since about two thousand and six. So it would be my recommendation to give me some time to go through those and maybe I could, you know, pass on copies to everybody involved and we can look at suggestions. So if we want to make an update, it might be a good time just to look at the whole procedure and see what we want to change.
Okay.
So can you bring back that, you're offering to bring back a recommendation?
Right, and I'll probably meet with each of you individually, I'll give you copies of the contracting rules and we can just kind of discuss where we're at. There may be some ORS changes even in the last fifteen years that we might need to update anyway. So it might just be a good time to take, you know, a couple of weeks or even a couple of months and look at these rules in great detail and decide how we want to move forward with them.
I was just gonna say, not two weeks, give them more time.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good, that's a great approach.
Yeah.
Yes.
I like it, it's like, you know, looking at a policy and updating it. David, did you have?
David Barnes, County Treasurer, yeah, I just, I agree with that approach to it. You know, this is something that, it's, as we discussed, as I discussed with Mr. Pope yesterday, it's something that he doesn't, you know, we don't under, can't find immediate uses for it. You know, it's a solution searching for a problem. So I just, yeah, I believe that you should go back in and look at it. And I also believe that if you, when you rewrite this, if you're going to do it, that you put a cap on it. You know, it's twenty-five-hundred dollars per occurrence, but there's no upward cap of anything. So it could be twenty-five-hundred dollars a week if something happens, you know. I just, I really think that you ought to, to do this, you need, you want to maintain control of your budget and like Commissioner Boyce said, you want to watch every penny that goes out. And I just, you know, giving authority to extra people, I just have, I have questions. Unless there's a need for it, unless there's a demonstrable need, I question it. So, but I do agree with the approach of looking at everything and bringing it back in another two weeks, month, whatever.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this just gives us an opportunity to really clean up a policy and we're gonna have to do a lot of that in the next...
So I think we're in agreement, this is just strictly a discussion item?
We'll table this as per Council Pope's recommendation, thank you.
Alrighty, well, so actually E turned into Port Orford Cemetery Board, so I'll hand that over to Anthony Pope.
Right, usually this would just be probably handled in consent calendar, but I just kind of wanted to explain a little background, this will take thirty seconds. In the last election, all three seat positions on the Port Orford Cemetery Maintenance Board were available. Nobody filed for those positions. There were three individuals who won seats based on write-ins, but as part of the process, they need to file a certification that they accept the office by a certain date, which they didn't do.
Okay.
So technically at this time, there is no members on the Board. According to the ORS's, it comes onto the Board of Commissioners to appoint Board members in that case.
Okay.
We did reach out to the three individuals who, just pass those down, the three individuals who did win the write-in and all three of them are willing to serve on the Board.
Okay.
And so it would be just my recommendation that the Board approve those three individuals to the three positions on the Board.
Okay, gentlemen, you've heard Chris?
I just have one comment on this and I, again, for those people listening and for this Board, these are reasons that we need to readdress the special districts in this county. And they were formed at a time that they were needed. And perhaps now we could consolidate all the cemetery districts in the county into a north, central and south or one district and save a lot of, or consolidate a lot of the issues that, excuse me, one district faces, could be consolidated and everyone could get together and join together and fix a lot of these issues. So this is just one more reason to look at redoing special districts. And I'm sorry to take this district to point that out, but it's just to keep it in people's minds that special districts occasionally need to be looked at and perhaps reworked. Thank you.
Alright. Any other discussion?
Sorry.
It's alright.
No, I just want to commend Council Pope for working on this and getting this to us today. And I don't know how much effort you had to put to find three applicants, but somebody did some work there, thank you.
Well, I think they were write-ins, right?
They were write-ins, yeah, that's correct.
I know, I know Katrina Montgomery, yeah, so.
So I will make a motion that we approve the write-ins for the Port Orford Cemetery Maintenance District.
Second Mr. Chair.
Alright, thank you, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. With that, I will go to Commissioner Updates.
We need to take a break.
Do you take a break at ten? Ten oh two, so it's perfect, we'll take a break and meet back here at ten-ten, how's that? Eight minutes, is that not long enough? Ten?
Ten's fine.
Ten fifteen is good, so.
Thank you.
Thank you folks.
CIS, and I really enjoy coming every year to this conference because CIS, we are all about counties, we are owned by counties, we were formed by the AOC. This is a great occasion for us to meet everybody in one place and learn what's important to the counties all across Oregon.
It's the networking, I mean, we learn a lot about the different issues that counties deal with, but it's networking with other Commissioners, getting ideas on how they handle situations, that is the most helpful for me.
I love my job, it actually matters to me on a daily basis. I used to do a lot of charity and, you know, in commissioning in Deschutes County, you can make a serious difference. Lots of things have happened since I've been in office and I feel like it's important to represent the people. I grew up in eastern Oregon and I love the residents of eastern Oregon. The architect of our first house actually had Doris Day as a dear friend and a client, and he would bring Doris Day up the mountains in Malibu to our house as it was being built.
This is my fourth conference at AOC. My favorite part is the fellowship with other Commissioners and coming up with solutions with common situations and with Commissioners from around the state to best serve our people. My favorite part about being a Commissioner in Josephine County is the people that we work with. We live in the most beautiful place, but we have the most beautiful people. They are talented, artistic, caring. We have such a high level of philanthropy and just caring for our fellow citizens and it's the best place in all of Oregon.
Hi, I'm Commissioner Martha Schrader from Clackamas County, Oregon. I'm the current President of the Association of Oregon Counties. Oh my goodness, I've been President for one year, but I've been a member of the Association of Oregon Counties since two thousand and three. So one of the reasons I really wanted to be President and I've enjoyed it so much is because I get to know everybody across the state, all the Commissioners. And I've been from one end of the state to the other, visiting with them, talking with them and really getting an idea of how we differ, but more importantly, what our similarities are and what we can do with one another to move forward with good county government.
I've been coming to AOC now for four years. My favorite part of serving as Commissioner is trying to bring positive effects for our community and our county.
This is my second year at AOC and the camaraderie that I've found in my eastern Oregon partners and just the camaraderie of AOC has really blessed my life.
My name is Court Boyes, Curry County Commissioner. This is, this is a collection of people, County Commissioners, public officials, well-attended from all over the state. You know, I have the privilege of working with a very diverse group of people, different ages, different backgrounds, different interests, but they're all teaming up to solve the problems of our county. And it's just, it's just really a pleasure to be able to be connected with and working with those people. And better days, good days ahead for our county and our citizens.
Hi, I'm Joe DeBulskis. This is my third AOC convention and my favorite part is the networking with the people. And the breakout sessions are kind of good because it gives me something to focus on, a goal where I want the county to be in five years when my term is up.
Hi, I'm Kil McCounty Commissioner Dave Yamamoto. Our county college class was probably one of the, was the best county college class ever at AOC. It was the largest at over thirty-three members. When you look at the legislature and the power that the major metropolitan areas have, the rural counties are oftentimes left out of those conversations. AOC really does a terrific job of representing rural counties and rural interests and we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the impact that we do in Oregon without AOC.
My name is Joe Burney, Lane County Commissioner from Springfield. My favorite part is eating good food. My second favorite part is meeting with other Commissioners, seeing what they're thinking, comparing solutions to problems, learning how nonpartisan solutions really are and getting ideas.
Hi, my name is Derek DeGroot, Klamath County Commissioner. So I'm running for Second Vice President of the Association of Oregon Counties. I believe that our association is perfectly poised to solve problems and bring solutions to Oregon politics and communicate with the legislature about the diversity of Oregon.
I'm Jay Bozovich and I'm a Lane County Commissioner. So I've been a Commissioner for about eight years and eleven months. And my favorite part about being a Commissioner is this job is different every day.
Hi, my name is Alex Tardif and I'm a Commissioner for Columbia County and currently serving as AOC Treasurer in my second year. And the thing I enjoy most about AOC and being the Treasurer is the ability to bring thirty-six counties together to build a state vision, to move our state forward into the future while building a livable, workable community that we all want to enjoy.
One of the things I really appreciate about...
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs, and it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire, so we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forest down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded. We're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go. We just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm gonna be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally, and I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's gonna benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away, and so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langloes is less than 500 people. It's very small, so we have to bring in tourists, and being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my day job, and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're gonna send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan, and we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area, so we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small, and now we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang up last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're gonna promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way, and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationship...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Welcome back. We are done with everything except Commissioner Comments and Executive Sessions, so we are gonna go to Commissioner Updates right now, and I'm gonna go to B. Commissioner Pash.
Oh, you don't have any?
No, I don't.
Wow. I don't have a lot, actually. I am waiting for some documentation from ODOT on what transpired a few weeks ago and a few months ago. They are going to come back with some information, so I'm waiting for that. I am concerned about the Public Housing Authority and some of the issues that we're facing there. There is piles, I agree that there is piles of money I think that we could be applying for, for low-income housing, HUD housing, you know, several different areas of the federal funding. I've gotten some emails from some concerned citizens about it as well, and I'm just, I know our planning department is working hard. We've identified some properties, and we're gonna let that play out, but I just want everyone out there to know that we are very, very concerned about housing, and we are going to be moving forward with making sure that we apply for our fair share of it. We've gotta get some things moving on that, so that's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Boyce?
Question for Mr. Pash. What was the reference to ODOT? I'm not sure what that was regarding. The reference was on the issues of a citation that was written against me several months ago and how it's going to be dealt with through ODOT and their higher-ups, their management, because they have to deal with it. I understand. Thank you.
Any...
So I put some on my next.
Yep, yep, yep. Yes, you are.
Last just go around. Put on your desk some documents today. One is on grant opportunities for Coos and Currie County. You know, I'm gonna keep pushing, even though I failed two, three times to get a grant writer, and we'll be bringing before the board on the 20th some sort of combination with a COVID relief coordinator, a housing specialist, and a grant writer. Number one, number one priority there. I want to report to the citizens that it's a tough time in the Oregon Legislature right now with redistricting, redistricting efforts, quite unfair. I'm gonna read a little bit of a letter here that I sent out September 17th, or last minute of the 15th, or I would've got this to the public center. But it's a real tough time for rural Oregon, a real tough time when they did the, when Oregon, due to the population census, got a sixth congressional district. There's a lot of optimism that rural Oregon... Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll start over on that. Oregon getting a sixth congressional district. The hope was from many parts of rural Oregon that we would be better represented, and the final outcome, well, I'll read the letter first here, at least parts of it. As elected officials, Dear Presiding Officers, this is again the Oregon Legislative Redistricting for 2021, or for 2022. As elected officials of varying political backgrounds and representing communities across our great state, we write to you with grave concerns over the redistricting plans you appear to be preparing to adopt. We believe the primary map under consideration is deeply flawed and unworthy of adoption in its current form. Throughout the proposed congressional maps, Oregon State Senate Maps and Oregon House Maps, there are counties examples, countless examples, excuse me, of communities of interest being unnecessarily divided, existing boundaries like cities, counties, and school districts being ignored, as well as what appears to be instances of political gerrymandering meant to benefit one party at the expense of others. Many of us, as well as our constituents, provided public testimony in response to the draft maps suggesting changes. To our disappointment, very few of these changes were incorporated into the final maps that you're preparing to move forward. In the case of the congressional maps, not a single change was made over the initial A map that was introduced. To be clear, we understand the task at hand is exceedingly complex and not made any easier during these unprecedented times of social distancing, virtual meetings, and remote lawmaking. We also understand that no matter what the final maps look like, most everyone will be satisfied or believe the final outcome to be fair. I'm gonna skip now what we really, from rural Oregon, we're trying to get the people in charge to understand, and the best way to summarize it is that four of the six congressional districts now at least have some attachment to Portland/Multnomah County, and that is a blatant attempt to make sure that they can improperly impact the vote. And my concern, of course, and many people, is that it makes a bigger gap between rural and Oregon, excuse me, rural and metro, rural and urban in this state, and it's not a balanced approach. David Brock Smith spent a ton of time on this, not fighting for his party, but fighting for a fair and balanced approach, and so it's very likely now that Portland will be controlling five of the congressional districts as we are represented in Washington, DC. What we wanted, and I think, I hope I articulated that fairly well, making sure that no district is drawn for the purposes of favoring any political party or incumbent or diluting the voting strength of any language or minority group. Number two, keeping counties, cities, and school districts whole, not, in other words, not dividing right in the middle of a city. Number three, preserving communities of common interest. Number four, ensuring that populations for each district are closely matched. And finally, avoiding crossing geographical or political boundaries and maintaining transportation links. So a sad time for rural Oregon, and I hope that we, through our state, our 4 million people that live here, that we can somehow come together and recognize the issues that are different and recognize the issues that are same. I had one commissioner say just remind them that rural Oregon grows the food that Portland enjoys, and so we need good representation. Next, Mr. Chair, the Oregon Community, excuse me, Oregon Coast Community Action Group, I reported to the board that there was $5 million between Coos and Currie Counties for renter relief, which would also help landlords, and there's been a major bottleneck, for lack of a better term, through Oregon Coast Community Action to get some of this, to process the applications, the COVID relief money that's come through, and get this, get these applications taken care of and ask questions, and none of that, essentially, none of that money has been dispersed yet. And I'm quick to point out that it's also good for the landlords because a lot of them are not getting paid, which of course compounds seriously our housing issue. So I have provided you with a letter. You know, Gold Beach Mayor Kaufman sits on that board, and she's already responded twice and is working very hard to, through the Board of ORCA, to remedy this problem as soon as possible. The money, again, sitting there is not doing anyone any good, and I'm gonna be meeting with other people that, through Coos County as well, basically understand that this has gotta be, this has gotta be corrected. So there we are, and we just, I'm just wanting to make sure that Currie County is treated fairly and our people are taken care of. So next, I have a two-page program from immediate release. I'd like to read that for the public because it's, we talked about the blue economy today. I'm just gonna read the front page, but this went, this went national as well as local on this press release, and I'm gonna take the time because I think it's really important that we all start to learn more about what our opportunities are on the Oregon coast, and too, from a competitive standpoint with California, Washington, et cetera, back to renewable energy, renewable resources. Global renewable energy leaders explore opportunities in Oregon's South Coast. Coos Bay Representatives from RWE, the second-largest renewable energy producer in the world, recently visited the Oregon South Coast to look at potential locations to develop offshore wind facilities. The visit last month was timed about a month ahead of the virtual U.S. Department of Interior Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, Oregon Intergovernmental Renewable Energy Task Force. That's the longest title I've ever seen. But I served, by the way, I serve on that BOEM task force, Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, and it's just an excellent group of people. Ocean Winds, that's a group that is pushing hard towards marine renewable energy, the wind towers. A local group based, focused on bringing the burgeoning offshore wind energy industry to the South Coast. Hosted by, the visit was RWE leadership, including head of Developmental Offshore Americas, Dominic Schwagman and West Coast Offshore Wind Senior Developer Ross Tyler. I've had several contacts with him through Zoom conferences. The group visited with local leaders and stakeholders. The two toured a location near North Bend on the first afternoon and locations in the Reesport area the following day. They met with local economic development leaders such as Oregon International, Port of Coos Bay CEO John Burns, South Coast Development Council Executive Director Sean Gibbs, and Teresa Haga, Executive Director of CCD Business Development Corporation, and we mentioned those in the letter Coordinator Madison did looking for support on a blue economy. During the meeting, Nancy Kirshner Rodriguez, Western Director of the Business Network for Offshore Wind, a national nonprofit educational organization with a mission to develop the offshore wind renewable energy industry and its supply chain, provided a briefing on current progress in the United States on offshore wind and the potential for development of a robust supply chain in Oregon. Later in the visit, RWE delegation explored locations along the coastlines of southern Coos and northern Currie Counties and met with local officials in those areas. The trip culminated in a roundtable with elected officials, followed by visits to locations near Charleston. The RWE representatives also met with government leadership from local indigenous people and had a long and productive meeting with several leaders and staff of the Confederate Tribes of Coos, Lower Amquon, Tsayuslaw. RWE's focus is to become a carbon-neutral company by 2040 by investing in technologies like offshore wind. Not only is this a renewable resource to create energy, but it also is a huge opportunity for manufacturing jobs on the South Coast of Oregon. Then I have a housing update, and I think I'm just gonna ask you, gentlemen, to read that, and it gets back to the $140,000 grant that we got for a housing coordinator, what my recommendation is in relation to Coos County, and teaming up with them, and it's one more area we might be able to work jointly with our housing committee and move forward. And finally, I have, let's see, yeah, Southwest Waring Community College. I got a letter from Dean Bunn the other day, and I just want to read to the board the work that they're doing, and I have challenged him that, you know, he's gonna have to prove to the community that there really is, that these classes are available and that there's effort to get the kids, you know, students listed and involved. So the college is off to a good start. They have a full slate of classes on the Coos campus and a good set of classes in Currie. The GED classes have a dozen or so enrolled and a good number of students attending. Attendance has been the challenge in the past. The first-year nursing class is off to a great start, as they appear to be working well together. We have work to do, of course. The COVID layoff has left us with some holes to fill by way of instruction. I'll be recruiting for instructors to teach chemistry, algebra... I'll be recruiting for instructors to teach chemistry, algebra, computer systems, and statistics. I want to read that again because if they don't have the instructors now, I see that as a little bit of a warning signal. I'll be, I'll be recruiting for instructors to teach chemistry, algebra, computer systems, and statistics. With an MOU in place with the Brookings Harbor School District, we are planning for a January welding class. That's good news. After more than a year without, I've recently found someone to teach speech. We're very excited to be offering communication classes again. I know Commissioner Pash is working on, we're both working with, go, excuse me, Brookings Mayor Herzog, and so...
Hedensgog.
What did I say? My God, Hedensgog.
I am not the mayor of Brookings.
Yeah. I would never make that mistake.
That's all right.
So, but there, there are some, there's some people that want to see if Brookings or the county or a combination couldn't vice walk, if, if they're going to have trouble getting educators, professors.
Yeah.
If there's a lot of delays. I mean, we all use COVID for an excuse. But, you know, I, I want to work with them. I want us to work with them. But I think we're, we just need full transparency and we need verification. So I'm, I'm not optimistic nor pessimistic, but I do want to see where we are and start pushing for the future. And that tremendous burden that's on the taxpayers of Currie County, that beautiful facility, and maybe there is, maybe there is a better option, maybe there's just a way that we can support them in improved ways or new ways. We'll go from there. Thank you. I think that's...
I like it.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Well, if that's it, that's, we'll, we'll adjourn the regular meeting. Thank you, folks. And we will move into executive session, and then after that, we'll come back in and... But as we go into executive session, I have to read a disclosure. And Matt, you can stay because it's going to address you, not personally, but the media. "The Currie County Board of Commissioners will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6602H and ORS 192.6602F, which allows the Commission to meet in executive session, excuse me, to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed, and to consider information or records that are exempt from public inspection. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of this session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room." Thank you. So Nate, you can shut that off.
Tips are crucial. As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively.